All right, very good. It's a little bit after four, but we're going to start our A-Boy-eight workshop. And we're going to discuss some things here at the workshop today. And then after the board gets done discussing, if anyone in the audience has anything to say about giving us input on these items, we're certainly appreciative of these items. So the first thing that we got on the list is our Locust Lane sidewalk feasibility study. And I think we have a guest today.
Can I give you a little bit of background?
Yes.
Mika from --
From the grant.
Oh, okay. From WMAFCO, our regional planning, transportation planning. A while back, former mayor Frisano had requested that -- actually, I don't mind seeing because I've been in a car for four hours. So had asked that we make sure we take advantage of everything that WMAFCO offers, including some in-house work that they do with their U-P-W-P Unified Planning Work Program. Where they -- WMAFCO staff will do some studies, transportation studies for us. Sometimes they'll hire a consultant to assist with the studies. And in this case, what we looked at was connectivity, pedestrian connectivity to the downtown from the adjacent neighborhoods. If you recall, we recently did East High Street using some of the road improvement funds. And we corrected some of the constraints on the sidewalk for handicap accessibility. Sometimes you can see that some of the sidewalks curl around the poles that were in the middle of sidewalk. The ramps were improved with tactile strips and that sort of thing. So we -- up into South Street, we had made improvements on the sidewalk as part of the road restoration program. I had applied for grant money for TAP funding, Transportation Alternatives Program funding through the state highway to finish sidewalk improvements from South Street to High Street. And to also include a new sidewalk around the Ford property up to the heights of the -- what do I have with the?
Friendship Heights.
Friendship Heights area. We just want to call it Altman Heights, Friendship Heights area. So that the folks in Friendship Heights, which actually had benefited from a grant before, putting curb ramps in, they had no handicap curb ramps. They could not get off the curb, on and off the curb, until we had gotten some money from CDVG to do curb ramps in that neighborhood. So as part of making, putting the puzzle pieces together and interconnecting the neighborhood with the downtown, so people could actually walk to the downtown, we decided to include as part of the TAP grant, a sidewalk around the Ford property that would help connect those folks to the downtown and hopefully the new train station, you know, when that comes. But mainly for the benefit, you know, the services in downtown. Well, in looking at, you know, the area in the downtown that could benefit from sidewalk improvements, Locust Lane, if you, when you look at the pictures, there's a lot of poles right smack dab in the middle of the sidewalk. And if you stand there and you watch people, and that's how sidewalks get used pretty often. People have to step in the street to use it, and if they're pushing a baby carriage in the street, and if they're in a wheelchair or in the street. And I recently, about a year ago, received an email from a gentleman who is a disabled vet that lives in the area, veteran. And he had asked about sidewalk improvements in the area. And I was happy to tell him that we were working on that. So this study is a result of the work that WMAFCO has done in conjunction with our K&amp;K to come up with some alternatives. Now, I did provide WMAFCO with some background information about 10 years ago, I think you were mayor back then. We had looked at Locust Lane and thought about maybe making it one-way, which way, north-south. And if you recall, there was a lot of people who were not happy with the one-way street, either direction. They didn't want a one-way street. So, I mean, maybe that'll come, that issue might come up again when we invite the public to review and comment on it. But so far, this is what WMAFCO and our K&amp;K have come up with. Take it away.
Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you very much. And I see everyone kind of gone through the presentation already. If I could just, actually, Jean did a great job of covering the first two slides, just talking about the background. And, you know, one of the first things we do is kind of look at what the town has already done to connect them to what we're currently doing. There are a few pictures here. You know your town better than anyone, but, you know, the downtown is really great for walking, especially along Main Street here. Sections in that area are really good for pedestrian movements. If I could direct your attention to page four, just getting into the purpose of the study, the purpose of the feasibility study. What we're trying to do here is look at the location and the design of the project to make sure that it's economically justified. We want to evaluate the alternatives and make sure that they're favorable from a social standpoint, as well as an environmental standpoint. And to really look at the study to make sure that the town could actually finance and manage the maintenance if the project does move forward. But generally, a feasibility study is basically looking at the potential success of the project, if it's worth the town's efforts to take it to the next step. And so that's what we're doing here. In terms of the scope, what our staff is doing is collecting data. We're looking at the project need and viability. We've also reviewed federal and state design guidelines for sidewalks. Jean mentioned, we've enlisted the help of our K&amp;K, and they're helping us to look at the sidewalk assessments from an engineering standpoint. They've also provided us with some preliminary cost estimates, which we'll talk about. And what we'll provide to the town is a technical report that summarizes all this work. And it'll make a recommendation for which sidewalk alternative may be the best and what the town could do to move forward to the next step. On page six, it basically just shows the project limits and the location of the TAP project, which Jean just covered. On slide seven, we looked at existing sidewalks in the area. We have a sidewalk inventory that we update from time to time. And as you can see here, that in this area, there are a number of existing sidewalks. But one of the things that we noted is, just because there's a sidewalk there, doesn't necessarily mean that it's a high-quality pedestrian environment. And that's really the case with Locust Lane. And a number of these sidewalks around Locust Lane are actually very narrow as well, especially for the residential neighborhoods. But you can see here where there's a gap in the pedestrian network, and that's the section of the TAP project we'll address, but there are some other gaps within the sidewalk system. Now, on page eight, looking at dwelling units, one may say, well, this is a really small segment of sidewalk. Locust Lane is about a half mile in length. And this one section that we're looking at between High and Main is just 500 feet. So it's a really small segment. And one may say, well, it's, you know, there are five residential units there, and you could say, well, you know, only a few people will benefit. But actually, the spirit of this project goes beyond the block. When we looked at, this first frame looks at dwelling units within 500 feet of this segment, and then a quarter mile within this segment. And you can see here that there are over 200 dwelling units within this area. And we also looked at data within our, within the block group that this segment is located in. And there are over 900 people within this census block group, and there are also 1.4 households that don't own a car. Now, that is a really small percentage, but nevertheless, those people may be relying on transit. And if you are a transit rider at some point in your trip, you're also a pedestrian. So again, this project does have, it will impact a number of residents. On slide nine, pedestrian generators. Usually with a study like this, you need to collect some pedestrian counts, but with our budget and also with the scale of the project, we didn't do any pedestrian counts. But what we did is, we took a look at pedestrian generators. And they're basically activity centers where pedestrians would travel to or from. And so it just tries to uncover where walking trips may, may happen. And you can see within this vicinity, this is actually a 10-minute walk from this area, and there are a number of uses, civic uses, parks, recreational uses. There are also institutional uses, it's a pretty short walk from Cecil College. And also, as Jean mentioned, it's pretty close to the train station as well. So there are some pictures here. You all know Locust Lane and the conditions here. We conducted a site inventory with our K&amp;K. You can basically see here with this first picture on page 10, the width of the lanes actually vary throughout this stretch here. In the middle of that section, the travel lanes do widen. The second picture just shows where one of the four utility poles are located in addition to guide wires, and it really is a hindrance to pedestrians. Slide number 11, it's just another angle of one of the utility poles. And you can see there that that one vehicle is actually spurred into the opposite travel lane. And it's really because of the lack of buffer between the pedestrians and vehicles. And it's just really uncomfortable, not just for pedestrians, but also the drivers as well.
Lou, are you here when we put those poles in the sidewalk again?
I suspect that's the right of, I mean, the edge of the right of way. That's how the, I probably wouldn't put a new stage. Well, I didn't build a sidewalk like that.
The current right-of-way within this section is 30 feet. So that means that some of the options may potentially go outside of the public right-of-way. We'll talk about that. On slide 12, just to get, just some other angles of the sidewalk currently. 48 inches are four feet. It's not grade separated, as you can see here. Some spots, it's also uneven. And the next, the second picture on page 12, you can see here that the sidewalk ends abruptly. So as Jean said, at some point or another, along your travel, along the section, you're going to end up in the street. And also, if it's trash day, now you have additional obstacles to navigate because the trash cans do impede travel as well.
That's one of the reasons why I don't exercise. I can't go out on the street like that, coming out of my house.
I'm saying grass quicker instead of trash cans.
On page 13, just on the left, it's a shot looking north. And on the right, a shot looking south towards Main Street. And you can see on the westbound side, it's well-tight with that trusty hospice right up against the travel lane here. And on 14, the final photos here, Jean mentioned the study that was done many years ago. And during that study, even though it did focus mainly on the particular movement's safety concerns that come up, and I believe that this speed hump was likely installed based on those safety concerns. And it does appear to be effective on cars. We didn't notice any speeding cars along the stretch. And then the other two pictures just show the conditions at the end of, at the endpoint, so at High Street and also at Main Street. And you can see there that curb is impeded by another utility pole. And there's also a crosswalk missing there. So again, just getting back at that high-quality pedestrian environment, it's not just the concrete, it's the lighting, it's the crosswalks, it's the curb ramps, those things that make people feel safe. And when people feel safe, they walk more. 15, we talked a little bit about model sidewalks and basically talking about safety as a priority and a number of materials underlining that, that people feel safe and sidewalks, and walking is safer when sidewalks are wider. So slide 16 gets into the sidewalk design standards. And basically, all of these proposed alternatives are based on accessibility policy and guidelines for pedestrian facilities. And that the stand, the typical section is a five-foot wide sidewalk with a standard eight-inch upright curb. And so the next few slides, we'll talk about improvement measures. And these talk about changes that need to take place at certain points along the segment. And then we'll talk about the alternatives, and these improvements feed into the alternatives. So one of the improvement measures is just to extend the existing sidewalks up to five feet. That goes above and beyond ADA standards, which is only 36 inches. Again, not really a high-quality environment. The second one is to address the area of the sidewalk that's restricted by an existing wall on page 17.
No, I just had a quick question.
Sure.
The pictures with the utility poles, the poles below the sidewalk, these sidewalks are?
Forty-eight, forty-eight inches.
Forty-eight. So going another foot, you still wouldn't be able to put a, you wouldn't take a wheelchair down the sidewalk, right?
Actually, you can take a single wheelchair. ADA law is 36 inches, so that's just enough room for a single wheelchair with a little bit of maneuverability. But the five-foot wide sidewalk actually allows two wheelchairs to pass by in opposite directions.
Not with the pole in the middle of it?
Oh, not with the pole, no. They're not with the pole. Yeah. Page 17, so the second improvement measure is to address the point where the sidewalk is restricted by an existing wall. And we're actually talking about, there are three walls there, but that one is talking about one of the walls there. The third improvement measure is to address the utility poles. And this is either, you can do this either by moving the sidewalk behind the utility pole, and that's outside of the right-of-way, or moving the utility pole outside of the right-of-way, and the sidewalk will be in the right-of-way.
Wait, after you got your presentation.
I'm trying so hard to give the.
Will you address the question after?
It might be best if we just get to the options, because that may address your question. And if not, I'll circle right back around. Does it have to?
Oh, just turn me up. No, I'm just kidding.
I know the options are there. So the last improvement measure is doing, there's one section where you have a utility pole and a concrete wall. And at that section, we have three different options. You can either keep it with the 40 inches and add the eight-inch upright curb, which is ADA, which is part of the ADA compliance. You could either move the concrete wall away, or relocate the pole and the concrete wall. On slide 21, passing zones are required in areas that are less than, less than 60 inches. So we're basically going to convert some of the driveways, and that'll be more clear in the next slide. Slide 22 has all the options laid out. So there are five options that we're looking at with our K&amp;K. Also, we actually had a, KCI was also at the meeting as well, so we got some good input from them. So the first option is to narrow the roadway. As I mentioned, there's a section of the roadway that actually is wider. In that area there, you could narrow it, narrow it and provide five feet. And then some sections of it, you'd have to incorporate the, some of the improvement measures. Now, one of the things we talked about with KCI is a difference in, for option one, which would actually be to expand the 60-inch sidewalk throughout the entire stretch. So I believe that's, that's going to become the full description for option one. One of the considerations with that is that it's a higher-cost option. It's also going to disrupt traffic. And there may be some potential retaining laws that we have to add, so that ups the cost as well. Option two is accommodate the utilities. That's basically acknowledging that the town probably, you know, doesn't have the money or doesn't want to spend the money to relocate four different utility poles, because that's really expensive. And another thing that you have to consider is that they're also connected with the system that's just north of High Street. So even though the section only has four utility poles, you may be talking about five or six utility poles. Again, that really adds to the cost. Option three is to relocate the utilities, either underground them or to shift them outside of the public right-of-way. The fourth option is to extend the sidewalk north of High Street. Right now, we're only looking between High and Main Street. But there is a potential just to expand the sidewalk to connect into the existing sidewalk that's further north, to the two communities that Jean mentioned. And then the fifth one, it's, it's probably not applicable, not applicable, but we put it in there anyway, just in case someone would ask, what did you think about adding a sidewalk on the west side of Locust Lane? And we did. But again, that's another, it's costly. There are a number of right-of-way issues there. And also, it may not be supported by a demand, but improving the sidewalk on the east side may be just, just what you need to support pedestrian movement. Question, if I didn't answer it at this point, you can go ahead.
The hottest one was the underground utility. I was thinking, before we go one-way on that, utility poles are the big option right now to that sidewalk. And I see that we've placed utilities underground here on North Street and High Street. Why don't we look at that first, replacing the utility line to the directed traffic that is the high-volume traffic area? I see that being an issue over the years, because I recall a family that used to live close to Locust and High Street. They were wanting to make this one-way when their kids were growing up and speed bumps. I was involved with all that stuff. But the retaining wall, we couldn't move that. They were willing to knock it down and do it, but the other residents side, I know that that's their property. The only thing is, it came up to the one-way would then flow the traffic through the Friendship Heights property. And I know that's where it was a big concern with the residents there, because now all the traffic is going to be cutting through there in order to get to High Street. I do know for sure that that traffic is used for throughway going through Delaware when you go down to sports, for the baseball, soccer. That right there is more of a traffic use than the one down in North Street. Because people come and cut through to go to Delaware. If taking that away, one way would take them down Howard Street then. And I see that being cluttered in the middle of town. I just wanted to bring up what you did, connect the underground utility poles. If we could remove that and use the underlying, underground utility, I think that would be a big plus for that street.
One of the things that was noted as well is that the current utility poles are really old, and there's minded leaning, and they just don't look good. So it's possible that in the next few years, that they may be replaced by the utility company. And if that is the case, then it might be best to just wait until that happens and then provide the five-foot wide sidewalk. But that's something that we have to follow up on to see what, you know, what the timeframe is.
And on the left side with your sidewalk, I see the tree's been tore down or cut down. That was another option, putting a sidewalk on that side. One more comment. The Ford property, when you talk about extending sidewalk going around to Locust Lane from High Street, number one is, the question is, is that property ever going to be used for whatever they plan on using? That would be a great thing to find out what their future use would be to that property, because a lot of people cut on an angle through the Ford property to Locust Lane. They don't cut all the way up to the corner and come around. So they use the angle all the time through that property, if you notice what I'm talking about. Coming from High Street, they're cutting right across in the middle. And that's their path that they made as a sidewalk for them. You're familiar with what I'm talking about, right, Jean? So just one comment there.
And if the sidewalk that we're going to put in around the Ford property is completely within the road right-of-way, so we will not be impacting Mr. Ford's property. And a couple of years ago, the town had approached to acquire the property for a park, but he was not interested in selling it at that time.
You can also recall when they had flowers planted out there, don't you?
The wildflower garden, yeah.
I don't think the preliminary estimate that WMAFCO has given us for relocating the utilities and doesn't, certainly doesn't appear to be that great. I mean, it's, it may still, is that, is that a?
And the footnote here, it mentions that none of these figures include the right-of-way or the utilities. So what they do include is curb and gutter, excavation, the concrete for the sidewalk, a little bit of contingency and drainage. One of, another thing that came up is, the town did actually ask us to take a second look at the cost estimates, and that's something that we've asked our K&amp;K to do. We've also asked the town if you have any unit costs, specifically from sidewalk projects that you've done. These estimates are based on a sidewalk project that was done in Maryland by the consultant. So it's very possible that if the unit costs are different, these figures will come out a little bit differently. But again, they don't include the utility or the right-of-way, so.
It's going to be several hundred thousand probably.
That's what I would think.
And right-of-way, right-of-way, what it means is right-of-way acquisition. If you're going to locate a pole on someone's property, you have to pay them for that. You have to purchase an easement on their property.
To the bottom, on Locust Lane, we just don't have the room. There's really no room, right?
Well, there is, there's alternatives that you can do where, you can do the 60-foot wide sidewalk. You're going to shift the road over. However, you're, this, that does entail on the east side, where there's one or two homes there, the church property, they're going to have to cut into the bank there because of the change in topo. Fix some of those concrete steps, they're going to have to probably repair those. And then they would extend the sidewalk more into the roadway, that shifts the roadway and then make the lanes a little smaller. I think it goes from 20 to 26 feet wide, so you'd have 10-foot to, you know, 13-foot wide lane. But you don't need 13-foot wide lanes, 10-foot wide lanes are fine.
What is our total right-of-way there? Is that 20 feet to 26? I mean, is that our total?
It's 30 feet total, yeah. So what some of the alternatives include are, in certain sections, the sidewalk will be 60 inches, five feet. Areas where there's some constraints with the pole, you're going to either have to curb the sidewalk around onto someone's property and purchase an easement. There's one constraint point where you've got a pole and a concrete wall. So that's going to be a little tougher. We're going to have to take a little bit of the wall in. And the wall's crumbling now. It wasn't one of the nicer print ones, which I was concerned about, the ones that were still in really good shape. But we'd have to work, we'd have to work around the pole, sort of like what we did on High Street.
Okay. Well, what do we need to do from here?
At this point, kind of flipping back to, it's probably going to be.
I saw your.
Page 27.
Yep.
So we just wanted to point out that the construction cost isn't the only thing that we're looking at with this study. We're also looking at neighborhood support. We're also looking at the complexity of the design. And so those are things that I want to go into our summary recommendations to the town. At this point, we'd like to open it up to public input, so we could maybe meet before the next meeting that you have, to have members of the public maybe give us some comments.
Have a public hearing, I mean?
Not necessarily a hearing, just, we usually have an open house public workshop. We've done it before, before.
Bicycle plan, right?
Yeah. Just right out in the lobby, we'll just have some boards, we'll have all this information available.
Let's make it happen. Let's get started.
Because what you've got is a list of alternatives. Not one has been decided on because you want the public to weigh in, what they want to say. Then, of course, you're going to want to weigh the costs and the benefits, and then make a decision as to which way you'd want to go. The consultant will make a recommendation, but ultimately, the approval for whichever direction you go in is up to the board.
Jean, wasn't there two additional houses on the north side of Locust Lane? Would we be dealing with only these one houses on the corner of High and Locust, as far as like getting an easement or?
Yeah, a couple of the houses, depending on where the road right-of-way falls and whether there's a, there's also a fire hydrant that has to be moved back.
And a drain.
And there's drainage in there, yeah. So this is going to give you sort of conceptually what your alternatives are. But once you start digging down and you get the engineer in there, he'll have more detail as to exact cause for improving the drainage and that sort of thing.
Very good. Let's move forward and get the public input.
But the road, there's no recommendation to make the road one-way. I know that that has been discussed and put away for now. If someone brings it up in the public, then maybe you want to open it up again. But I informed Mika that I was there for that, and no one will make the road one-way.
How about the bridge? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect timing. We're going to invite Mr. Tom Loughlin up here, the Director of Economic Development of the City of Haverford. Thank you, Tom, for coming.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming back to your hometown today.
My pleasure.
Tom?
My pleasure.
We may need you here. Let me call the mayor.
I'm here to serve.
I'm here to serve.
Well, listen, we appreciate you coming and we invited Tom to come down and wanted to enlighten us a little bit on some of the programs that Havergrace offers to their business community. And what kind of kicked this talk up, this Tom and I were talking the one day and I asked him what kind of interest rate the town of Havergrace is getting on their money. And he said, well, in some cases, we're getting three and a half, four percent in general. I mean, it was, and I was like, wow, how is this happening? You know, and of course, there's a few programs that allow it to get to that point. And that's not general fund money and I don't want, but it intrigued me enough to think that maybe we should think a little bit outside the box when it comes to some of our funds. Maybe we can earn a little bit more money on a portion of our surplus or rainy day fund money that's sitting there. And I want to think out, I want to think in a way that we can use these programs in a way to help drive what we want Elton to be. I want us to think about how we could do these programs to fill light properties. And, but I think, I don't want to take away anything.
You're in your time.
Well, I want you to kind of tell us what Havergrace is doing. You know, when you have success, we like to copy. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. If you've got something that's successful, and listen, I really appreciate you sharing this with us.
No problem.
Because we're not going to share anything. Make sure we don't...
First off, thank you all for inviting me up. It's an honor to be up here, living as long as I have here. It's a pleasure to be here and to see all friendly faces, some folks I haven't seen in a while. But the City of Havergrace, it was in a unique position that the charter, the code, only allowed investments into certificates of deposit. In other words, we couldn't go out and take excess funds and create a pool and then go on and lend that money out. So what we did was, we turned to the DHCD and they had money. And we call it the RAD loan program. What it is, it's a revolving loan program. And that program was funded by the State of Maryland. Now, what we did was, there were certain, there were certain requirements that we had of the applicants that came in for that money. And generally, the requirements were that, number one, that it was a business and it was a business located within the city limits. We always looked to see any project, whether it be a facade or an outfit, it could be for inventory. We weren't real stringent upon the use of funds. Just so we knew, at the end of the day, what we were doing was going to fulfill our purposes. And usually, those purposes were that more people were going to be hired, it was going to have the ability to increase the sale of the business. And when we looked at, when we looked at this fund, we got this pool of money. We got, over 10 years ago, we received $365,000. And we, some of the rules that we made up, and you're free to do that, as far as interest rate, underwriting terms, term of, a term of an obligation. So what we said was, we've got 365,000. We started out and said, the most we're going to lend out to any individual is 50,000 dollars. And that was to start it out with. And we got a couple requests for 50,000. A lot of the requests were in the 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 dollar range. And they were for either facade improvements or fit-outs, interior fit-outs, where a lot of folks were saying either they're going to remodel or they wanted to expand their business. So we lent out the bulk of that money. And of course, when I served on, I served on this committee for over 15 years now. And so this was when I was working at the bank and serving as a volunteer to the city. We lent all that money back and we had quite a bit of success. All that money that we paid goes back into a pool and we lend that money back out again. And basically, that's what we've been doing. We had a, we had a period of probably about four months. We got notification from the DHCD that they were, they wanted to discontinue the revolving loan program. And they said, and they notified all municipalities and all counties in the State of Maryland. And they said, if you want to continue with this fund, then these are the 138 things you have to do. I'm being facetious. But there was, there's a lot of, there's a lot of compliance involved with this. And it was compliance that was never enforced upon us before. So we said, where is this coming from? And somebody from the federal government looked at the state program and they said, how come you're not enforcing this? And they said, well, you know, we, you need to get in touch with everybody who participates and tell them you guys start following these rules and regulations. Our council and our economic development area, we really struggled with it because we felt like, you know, this is, these requirements, the compliance that you have to do with some of these loans, it's huge. And you've got to have some background in it to know that you are in compliance. And of course, the penalty for compliance could be civil money penalties and the loss of your funds, you know? And we were very aware of that. But in the same case, we were really aware that a lot of business people came to our council meetings and spoke up for the program. There's a lot of businesses that are a success today in the City of Havergrace because of the program. And we felt that, you know, this is, this is doing the public, is doing a public service. This is what it's all about, is serving the citizens of the City of Havergrace. Helping somebody that's not quite bankable and lending these funds out, okay? Now, so that's the, we just had a meeting, we had our council meeting on Monday and they passed a resolution saying that we were going to continue with the program. We had a full change or two. I couldn't believe...
What happens if you get out of the program?
If you get out of the, well, what we've got right now, we've got 200, we've got roughly $280,000. And to speak to the success of...
Out of money, you were...
No, no. We've got 280,000 in lentable funds right now. We've probably turned that 365,000 that we started with back 15 years ago, that thing's probably turned over at least three times with people making repayments. And there's payments going back into a pool.
So the 365,000 was granted to you?
Yep, that was, that was our seed money to start the program. So at any rate, you know, we, we've got that now. Now, if we would get out of the program, what we would have to do is, we'd have to take all the outstanding loans that we have now, which turn us about 600,000 dollars. All those loans would go back to the State of Maryland. The 280,000 that we have in that pool would go back to the State of Maryland. And the state says, you know, we'll take the money back, but if you can come back and find a project that you think's worthwhile, say like, you wanted to, you wanted to repay North Street and you made application, that grant money would come back to you, you know? So it's kind of, these are the things you've got to do to get it back. Now, with that being said, we, we've kind of followed the state because the charter, once again, doesn't permit us to make any, we've got lots of money in certificates of deposits. So, you know, unless you're going to do, make some type of amendment or amend that part of the charter, and I don't think anybody has an appetite for that right now. If you're going to self-fund it through the town, in other words, you're going to take some of the monies that you all have and set up a, set up a pool for that and start lending that money out. That's exactly, well, you probably do it real similar to what we're doing. But you wouldn't have, there wouldn't be any compliance, basically. Because your money's self-funded as soon as you tell them. So you're not under the auspices of the DHCD or State of Maryland or any of their, you know, any of their departments.
What are you collateralizing when you lend the money out through that program?
Everything. We take, we'll take personal guarantees, we'll take deeds of trust on the business, we'll take deeds of trust on folks' home. We will take corporate guarantees, personal guarantees. We do, if someone's buying equipment, for example, we would secure that with a UCC-1 that gets recorded with the State of Maryland that gives us a position on the equipment. So there wasn't anything that, you know, would go untouched. The thing of it is with these loans, you have to remember that these are, these funds are, the focus or the mission for these funds were to lend them to people who weren't bankable in, you know, in a commercial setting. So there is, there is some risk. We've been really lucky with ours. We felt like our due diligence to the taxpayers is that if we're going to lend these funds out and, you know, we've got to do our due diligence and we have to do whatever we can to cover the town as far as getting a deed of trust on a piece of property, getting, you know, getting a personal guarantee. It's real easy to make a loan to a business and that business declares bankruptcy and there's no personal guarantees, everyone walks away and the city loses, you know? So we're very conscientious about, you know, covering up that loan as much as we could in the way of collateral.
The typical term wasn't duration, a big flexible?
Yeah, the, what we normally did was, if we had somebody who had equipment, say somebody wanted to start a restaurant here in Elton and you wanted to finance that equipment, generally, the depreciation on restaurant equipment usually ran from, runs from four years to five years. So we wouldn't finance any equipment any longer than the depreciable life of the equipment. And that...
Facades, what was that?
No, facade, depending on the loan amount. Because what we did was, we did somewhat scenarios. When somebody came in, we always asked for a personal financial statement. We wanted at least three years on the business. If the business was a startup business, then we asked, we always directed them to go to the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center. And the Small Business Development Center will take any business and put together a business plan for them free of charge. Then they can come back to the town and say, here's my business plan, these are my projections for the first three years. So you have something to base your decision on, whether to grant this loan or not. But if, if we had something five years, five thousand dollars, you know, if they were doing a facade, we might do that five years for them, six years. But we always wanted to be mindful that, we never wanted to give somebody a payment that they couldn't afford. And that was, because we wanted them to be successful. And once again, you're not talking about conventional financing through a commercial bank. You're talking about somebody that not necessarily has to be a credit, but somebody says, I'm either starting a business or, you know, I need some help. And the town, the city's there to help them.
What is the interest rate that you guys are pulling in on this money?
We were, we were pulling in up at, we were pulling in at 5% up until Monday.
And what happened then?
The rate went down.
Okay.
And the reason that the rate went down is, you have to ask yourself, if you're going to do this, if you're going to do this thing, you've got to say, why, you have, you have to ask yourself, why come here? Why not go to a bank? You know, or why find another source of finance? Why would they want to come to the town of Elton? Well, number one, that they'll consider my request because I'm not quite bankable yet. And number two, because the interest rate is such that, you know, it's a great deal. Prime rate's three and a quarter percent right now. The town fathers said, let's do it at two and a half. And we did it at two and a half because, number one, it's below market, number two, it's going to help whoever's trying to start a business, you know, in the town. And we still felt like if you took, if you took 100,000 dollars and went to any of the banks, you know, I don't care what bank you went to, you're not going to even get 1% on your money right now.
One, a tenth, a tenth of a percent.
Those bankers are terrible.
Now, who administers the program in Havergrace? Are you a Lone Ranger or do you have staff?
I have staff. But what we do is, we, you know, like you have your, you probably have a DPW committee, have an arts committee, you know, those are some of the commissions that we have. We have a RAD commission. And what we did was, it's composed of seven people. And two of the people are bankers. We've got one CPA and we've got one business person and we've got, we've got two business, we've got two business owners and we've got a regular citizen that compose those seven people. We wanted the CPA there, that's somebody that can look over a tax return and tell you the numbers, okay? Anytime that we'd get a request, what we do is, they, I'll go out and I'll meet with them, collect all the information, I'll go back and run the numbers, and then we'll, we'll call a meeting. We meet once a month regularly. And sometimes if there isn't really anything new or there aren't any applications, we might cancel them. We don't believe in just having a meeting and having a meeting and that people show up. And then what happens is, that committee either says, we're going to approve this request or we're going to decline this request. Regardless of whether they approve it or decline it, the next step is that it goes to the council. And the council has the final say on whether that request is approved or declined. I've seen instances in my 15 years where we've made a recommendation to decline something that the council said, absolutely not, we're going to, we're going to approve this thing, we're going to make this money. And they've done that. And, you know, that just shows that, you know, to me, I thought for sure that, you know, this is going to be a disaster. Worked out fine, paid off early. You'd be surprised by giving terms to folks that are in need, that, you know, that do have all the, all the right things in play but can't get a commercial loan or, you know, conventional financing, that if you help them and they're making, they're making their investment into the city and that's what we look at. You know, I can tell you, every one of you, they have to drive down the street and see an empty slipper. It just, it burns me up. And, and so when people come in and they, how engaged is that business person when they sit down and they go, I'm going to put my stake here in Elton and my stake is either, number one, I'm going to buy this building or I'm going to fix it up. And we've seen a lot of that. Or I'm going to sign a long-term lease. And, you know, that route. So it's been, it's been a good, it's been a very good tool for us to attract businesses to come in because you don't have to say, we'll give you a three-year tax abatement if you come in and set up shop, you know? we'll give you a, a three-year tax abatement if you come in and set up shop, you know, and be staked. Uh, you know, some folks go, oh, that's nice, I'll pay taxes for three years. Uh, if you say, no, we'll, we'll give you a loan for two and a half percent, you know, to fix up that building down there. That's a big, big, uh, a big, big incentive for somebody to say, should I go to the Northeast or should I go to Elton? And Elton's sitting there saying, they're gonna help me out, they're gonna invest in me, I'm investing in the town. Um, so-
One of the challenges that we have, Tom, is we have absentee, well, we have, we have owners of the properties that live outside our county, maybe even outside our state. And, uh, these programs, to get the message to them, is very difficult at times to do it. I mean, I know that you've been in contact with many of the owners over the years and you try to reach to them and, and it, and they don't care, you know, they got a management company that might be handling their rent or, uh, it just really doesn't matter to them. Uh, what do you think about co-ops? And when I say a co-op, a, a, a development group or development company wanting to come in and has access to acquire these properties and figuring out a way that we can help them acquire those properties?
I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. You know, I, I really do. Because, um, you want it to be on your end, of course you want the program to be successful, but you have to look, how labor intense is it gonna be to get to the finish line? And if you've got folks that, um-
We can't get to the finish line with the current owners of these buildings?
Right. And we have the same problem. And, um, I, I've made it my mission right now that the blighted buildings that I've got in town, I'm starting to do property research, I'm starting to, uh, find out, uh, who the individuals are, and I'm starting to go back and look at our code. And if these buildings aren't up to code, uh, you send code enforcement out. And, uh, and code enforcement goes out and goes, okay, uh, here's what we found. One, two, three, four needs to be fixed up. And if they're not, and so, letter goes out to them, says, you need to get this place fixed up, here are the items in question. So you send that out by certified letter. Uh, most of the time they don't sign for it, the letter comes back, and they say, that's fine. This is what the cost is gonna be to fix that building down here. And I don't care if you owe a hundred, a thousand, or two million dollars on that building, we're gonna fix it up and it's gonna become part of your tax bill. And when you don't pay your tax bill, we're gonna sell your property at tax sale. And then that block building will no longer be blighted.
Yes.
And, uh, we have, will have gotten rid of, uh, a bad actor, if you will. Uh, keys to success, you, uh, you really get, uh, their attention. And you think that, um, you'd be surprised how many landlords the City of Haverdegraze and the town of Elton have become.
Very interesting. Well, listen, you, you've certainly, uh, there, there's multiple programs out there with the state, but I really appreciate you talking about the, um, RAG program with us. And I've tried to educate myself on a lot of these programs. I've, uh, spoke with the director of Baltimore County and they've had similar programs. Uh, there is, uh, as I say, in these co-op programs, which I think are very unique. Uh, and a lot comes, comes down to how we can, if we can, invest our money in our own community. And, uh, those are the things that I haven't really researched enough to find out what our charter states, uh, from our sign-up. But I know we're allowed to put it in CDs, I know we're allowed to do this and, and, but I'm not sure. And, and I wouldn't put you on the spot to ask you that question, but I think that these are ways that we can get these blighted buildings filled in. Uh, we can, uh, take control, take control of what we want in our own town.
Just a couple of closing remarks to you. It, it's not all good, okay? But the, uh, the, the, don't get that idea. It's, it's good when it works, it's great, uh, when it works. People come to downtown Elton, they don't wanna see a bunch of empty storefronts. They wanna see stores that are open and they wanna be able to scroll downtown. Have something at a restaurant, then after eat and walk downtown. But the, the biggest challenge is, uh, gonna be the constituency, the voters out there and the newspapers out there. Uh, we, sometimes, uh, in the past, when we've lent money to an individual or a business, some folks come in and go, I wanna see all the information under the Freedom of Information Act. That's scared a lot of our business people away. And so we had to stop and do some research. And we found out that personal financial information and, uh, that sort of thing doesn't fall under this type of appropriate. So what we do is, and we don't like to have, when we have somebody that falls past due and we're trying to help them, of course, all past dues are reported to the council, okay? But we don't wanna get up there and say, you know, Tom Lawson is past due, he's two months past due, and this is what we're doing. We, we assign each loan a number, okay? And when we talk in terms of a council meeting, we say, yeah, loan number one, two, three, uh, you know, is past due. And then council McGivens can say, you know, that's fine, I understand, we're working with them. And so that is, is good for the next person that comes along and says, you know, if I do stub my toe or I do have a problem, uh, I know that the council's gonna work with me and I know, my name's not gonna be splattered on any paper.
Yeah. Does the press file FOIOL on that?
Pardon me?
When the, the press could file for public information?
We, we had a press, but we had a business person that it was kind of strange that, uh, she, she had a business, but she lived in the city also. And her next-door neighbor and her got into a disagreement and they became bitter enemies. They became bitter enemies to the point that the police were showing up there because somebody's bush was hanging over somebody's property line or a sign was up in somebody's yard. And, uh, so, well, he came in and he showed up at the council meeting and he goes, I wanna know. And he filled out all the paperwork. We had to turn, we had to turn it over to our council to give us an opinion on it. Because, you know, the Freedom of Information Act covers a wide berth of things, but it doesn't cover that. Nobody should have the right to see, um, Earl Pyner's personal financial statement.
I wanna see it.
If we don't follow the state's guideline, if, if we do this by ourselves-
Right.
Then, then how does that all apply to the same-
Well, Freedom of Information Act, it does, but any, any, you're not, you're not obliged to follow any of the DHCD's requirements.
Right, but it's for the Freedom of Information Act.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's-
And that was one question I had, cause I think when, when we spoke originally, you mentioned that, uh, the, the folks that can come get a loan through Haverdegraze had to be turned down from a bank.
Right.
Which is the craziest thing.
Should they have gone to the bank first?
Yeah. Yeah, and that was the craziest. To me, that's the craziest thing that I could imagine. I wouldn't want someone that was really-
Well, but it also helps your businesses. I think the reason they're coming to you is because they, they buy an empty building, they have no tenants paying rent, they have, you know, no one's living there, they have no income coming in from sales. So it's the seed money to, to get started.
Exactly.
So-
What they come to the revenue, uh, the interest earned, the revenue, does the town have to clog back into this?
We, we, we put it all back into, to that fund.
Up to the fund.
Right, mm-hmm, to the, to the RAG line.
So this three sixty-five you start with fifteen years ago, and should their program cease to exist and the state wants their money back, they wanna back the whole interest is earned over the years?
No, no, if they, if they ever called our program, what they do is they'd get all the loans that we currently have, plus they'd get any money that was left over.
Okay, you, you need to take expenses out of the revenue from these loans?
Mm-hmm.
Unless that, it's been all expenses.
And what we've done, and what we haven't done in the past, and we talked about doing that, anytime that, with any of the five percenters that we have on the books right now, if any of those folks came back to us and said, um, can you lower my rate from five down to two and a half? And, uh, the answer's gonna be, we sure can, but there's gonna be a fee of one percent to do that.
Understandable.
So that covers, uh, the modification agreement that has to be drawn up. Plus, um, you have to think about, you know, uh, we were counting on in our budget, we were counting on interest income at a rate of five percent. Now we're, now, we're not gonna see that interest income on five, we're only gonna see it on two and a half. So we've gotta charge something to make up for the shortfall or the anticipation, you know, that anticipated income's not gonna come, cause we've lowered your rate.
Well, listen, the fact is, you're earning more on three hundred thousand dollars than we're earning on seventeen million.
But that's not general fund revenue.
I, I know it is, and it's programmed.
Well, that's the way they did it. But some, I actually, I was at the National Main Street Conference last week and there was a, a crash fest that, on this. And they are looking at the larger investment groups with giving more money, um, to do, you know, buy the buildings, get them fixed up, get them rented. And it really is happening because the towns want these buildings gone and with these landlords, it's not working.
And we work in conjunction with our Main Street too, cause they have the, the facade grant programs.
Right, that's their tip.
Yeah. So, and that makes it a lot easier because you can almost, I don't wanna call it double dip, but you could go and ask Main Street for a grant and they'll turn around and they might do a grant and they could come to us and go, uh, we need the bars, we're getting this much in grant money, but, um, we need this much, we need this much more.
Very good. Any other questions for Tom? I appreciate that.
No.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Pat, you got a question?
Just real quick, um, I know you said you had a council and a committee. Okay, you, like, the overall person in charge of the RAG program, are they like a paid administrator?
No, I'd be mad.
So you-
What, yeah, what I, what I do is, I'm in charge of the committee, I don't have any voting rights when it comes to whether you're gonna approve or decline a loan. But what I do is, once I, I hold the meeting, I chair the meeting, and then I turn over all that, uh, information and that request to, uh, the council. And usually, in our case, it's the, uh, it's the, uh, city administrator. And the city administrator also, I report to the mayor and the city administrator reports to the mayor. But the things that come before council goes through the city administrator's desk. So that package would go there first. And that's something in our admin committee meetings that we have, the, the pre-meeting before a council meeting, uh, that we would discuss and say, these are the loans that are gonna come up and this is what's gonna be discussed. And they usually, uh, talk about that. So, once they get up on the dais, they know that, you know, there's no surprises, that they're, they're well-versed on whose requests are coming forward and what, uh, what the outcome.
I guess part of my bottom-line question is, when you started this program, the town of Haverdegraze didn't actually have to go out and hire somebody to come in and administrate it for them?
No, no, we, we had a, we had an economic development. Uh, it was, back then, it was, that, this person was, worked for the Economic Development and Department of Public Works, so their duties were split. So we had some money there.
Very good. Thank you so much, Tom.
Great seeing all of you. And good luck. If you need, um-
We are gonna rely on you.
Please, if you call me, I, I gave you my word.
I know you did.
And, um, look forward to working with Tony.
Thank you, Tom.
I heard your wife was hard on you.
She's been in a movie theater and says, oh, no, now you go to the next one.
She keeps mentioning your name.
Nice luck. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good year.
Okay, let's talk about Button Woods.
About the planning report.
No. She, she asked the planning report.
Oh.
We fooled the planning report. Uh, but we're gonna talk about, uh, Button Woods. But in the meantime, uh, as we're talking about Button Woods, I'm gonna exit the stage left here real quickly. A little bottle of water. But where are we at on Button Woods? Where are we, what are we gonna discuss? Whether we're gonna do permit parking, I'm assuming? Uh, the parking plan? Is that what we're doing? I, I think we gotta figure out whether we're doing the parking permits.
If we go back to parking meters, I swear to God.
You put a button in? Parking meters?
Yeah, put them back in.
No, 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 no. You can do it.
That's holes in the ground.
I said Button Woods in the gray. I said this one.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I got it.
It is.
Can I hear you say you're putting parking meters in Button Woods?
Just to start it off, I mean, I went to visit my son in Virginia this week, first time in the area.
There first.
And where he lives, a road parking space. And automatically, we were directed down to the visitor's parking lot. No questions asked. Um, there was extra parking spaces, but in my mind, first thing came to mind was respect the people that are living in the road beside them. I had two other cars that followed me. No questions, we all just went into the visitor's overflow parking lot. No pass or no nothing.
Is there a letter sign? It might be the way to go.
It was, it was just a, a no-brainer. Um, and then as soon as we got out and visited my son, he said, did you guys park in the visitor's parking lot? Oh, okay, just wanna make sure. And, and we talked about this.
So there's nothing enforced, there's no parking permits, there's none of that stuff, that just, it's self-police?
Oh, that'll park him.
Yeah, but we've, they've tried self-policing for how long? Cause this has been an issue since I got here.
It's been a back-and-forth issue, but you have, I talked to three people that I've actually talked to, they don't feel there's a problem where they are. Um, so I, you know, I think we're gonna hear-
What block are they in?
Um, I think it's, it's the one, when you go in and then it's the first, is that it there?
When it's the first entrance?
Yeah, but it's down the end corner.
This one here?
Yes.
Dan, what is that?
The three hundred block.
Three hundred?
That's what I thought, three hundred.
Three and four?
Yeah.
Three, four, cause this is one, one and five, right?
No, no, that's five and six, that's right there.
One?
One.
Five, six, okay.
Yeah, but three hundred was the one that brought for the meeting, the three hundred block.
Yeah, but they lived right on the corner there and, um, I don't know. But, but, you know, you've heard it before too, so.
We've got forty-three, forty-three percent, right?
Yep.
How many, uh, forty-three percent of it, what was the total?
Well, they, they sent it to a hundred and fifty. Only a sixty-five responded, fifty-six said they wanted, uh, what do we have here? Said, uh, the letter, in an effort to serve residents of Elton, we are asking your opinion regarding designation of special purpose parking. That's what we wanted to find out, what kind of people, I mean, how many of the people respondents would be in favor of it. And the majority of people who did respond were in favor of it, but they only represented, uh, forty-three percent of the residents there. So, sort of like, if you, if you, if you wanna elect a candidate, you have to vote, you know what I mean? If you don't respond, you lost your opportunity to vote in the matter, so.
We've had to go respond and we deal with a general election.
Actually, you're right, you're right.
Forty-three percent?
Sixty-five responses is, is good. I mean, I've-
It is good, it is good.
Five people respond and we sent out a hundred, so.
Well, I think, I think your question at the town meeting was, as you mentioned, that, uh, some of the residents, uh, didn't know they were allowed to vote because they thought it was for the homeowner.
Or they threw it away and didn't even give it to the homeowner.
Gotcha, yeah.
Cause it said residents, and it gave the address, but it said resident and, uh-
I think we sent all the residents in one.
Correct.
But it wasn't, it wasn't the name.
The county adoption resident.
Right.
I would, I would say, my, my suggestion would say, we start with our parking passes to clear out some of those extra cars that are not supposed to be there.
Two per household?
And then use the overflow and direct them to go to the overflow. That will clear out a lot of extra which is space that is, that is being cluttered right now. If we don't go to that route, we've got three, four, maybe four people in a household with cars parked there. And if we get passes, we, we're just getting passes. But if we direct them to two per household and the extra car must go into the overflow, then we start monitoring with the police.
All right, so you give me two passes, we're gonna park.
Over in the overflow park.
I didn't say, if I had two passes, we're gonna park.
Anywhere?
Anywhere.
Right. Right.
Anywhere from permitted park.
And I understand that, but some of their concerns were that they wanted to park in front of the home. And I agree with you, two passes means you can park anyplace in that designated area.
So do we have to give them their address with the parking passes?
You can't.
Now, what do we do with Turnquist, though?
You just give them two parking passes?
Turnquist, do they have numbers?
No, no, they don't, they haven't.
That's worth saying all along, I, I'd like to do it exactly the way it is in Turnquist, because we already have a model of success there, and nothing's gonna be 100% begin with, no matter what decision we make. But it's gotta be a lot better than whatever it is now, we can tweak it a little bit as we go along, but Turnquist has been, the majority is fairly successful, is it not? Michelle?
There are some issues out there, but relatively speaking, yeah.
And the ones with the three and four cars, then they complain, they'll know that, here's the courtesy to the next person. I mean, you, you've been here 10, 15 years, all of a sudden, you got four, but when you had a homeowner association, you only had one and a half car spots to start with, so, we're actually saying, if we were to revert back, you're not complying anymore.
I would say that the, we should look at the, uh, citation fee for when we have to go out there and monitor. Because we're gonna get calls, and they're gonna say, uh, this person does not have a sticker on their car, they're parked in my spot. We're gonna dispatch a police officer, he's gonna come out there. Now, I, what is our current citation, uh, on that?
I'll have to open the ticket.
Okay, yeah, so...
I don't have, I go to send the ticket.
But I think that we should start to look at, that maybe...
10 or 15 bucks or something?
I, I actually... I, I actually believe that if we could, once we, once we start moving forward to this, we, we give some type of warning on the first one. And then, then you keep going back through, but I think that the citation should be higher, and then that citation, uh, price should go into another little fund to help monitor this, the cost of this program.
Yeah, because the cost of this, especially at the beginning, um, making the permit, you know, telling everybody about it, it's police that are gonna be called out there to be taken from somewhere else.
No, but I mean, that's what it is now, why, we've established it at $15, because it's in the, in the letter.
So, so that's something we can look at as we go forward.
What's the, what's the, what has Turnquist been as far as the fees, the penalties?
I have to dig through to see, I have the tickets are written, I mean, we don't, we don't have that information taken by geographic area.
And the other option is to identify the handicap that are needed for their space. I mean, even though, we, we, give us talk about this before, I know there's certain people that had a sign in front of houses, or one that have to be parked in front of houses, they'd come in and request it before we...
We have to, with the MPA.
I'm understanding that needs to be identified and defined, so we know.
Yeah, and once they do that, then, you know, they'll contact the town, the laws, and they'll spat someone out to the sign.
The MPA will issue an order, and we'll correct the sign. That's how, that's how you do it by law.
Is that you need that, that handicap tag in order, or does anybody have that?
Well, if you had one handicap sign there, and two handicapped people that could park, either one could park there.
It's like unique to that individual, or agency.
But the chances of, of another handicapped person coming along and utilizing that spot, probably...
Pretty remote, you know?
No, when I say that, if you have another handicapped person, they could walk by too. We would be glad to help anyone with a handicap, to get, get the same sign, ten signs up there, you know?
Well, I'd say the consensus of this board is that we're gonna go ahead and move forward with the permit parking.
And what I'll do, how to do that, is I'll have to amend the ordinance, and I'll bring it to the meeting, I can bring it to the meeting next week, okay? And introduce it.
And then, I guess, the second thing that we need to talk about, the improvements to the area that, uh, because I think that if we don't make the improvements, not every resident will be able to have two parking spots within their neighborhood, their section. Yeah, that was, Dan, is that correct, in that, what you had stated?
Correct, exactly, what I was gonna concentrate on is, um, block 100 and the 500 block. Actually, taking the existing island, cutting it back and putting, um, parking spots up there, because the...
I don't know if you wanna do that. I think the residents who live in those blocks would not like having their island removed and turning it into just a sheet of parking lot.
We'll save some of the, we'll save some of the island, but not, because we were out there looking today, and, uh,
I think to have two, a couple of trees and some grass around is a faraway life thing, you wanna kinda...
My preliminary estimate is if I take away some of the island, I can give eight spots to the 100 block, and I take 11 blocks to the 500 block, that's what, that was our preliminary, I'm pretty sure we can match those numbers. We've had some layout done decently.
How many spaces are out there?
Total?
Thirty-two.
Parking spaces?
I think you have... Thirty-two parking spaces right there.
And the main units was...
I counted 19 sidewalks.
Yeah, so we needed 38, we needed 38 spots, and you had 32, six more. Well, maybe we can look at a plan to make sure everyone has two spots within their zone.
Yeah, because if you're gonna, if you have more units than you have spaces, then whoever comes in at the door is gonna get them, the last people in the door will be able to get two permits, won't be enough to issue.
You, I, I guess, I, I hear what you're saying, you're saying that if you're not there to park, you park in the overflow.
Exactly, I mean, I think this is going to be, it's gonna come back and haunt us, is what I feel like, because they're not all gonna have a spot, there's a lot of cost involved in removing these, you know, the center islands, and, um... I, I don't know, I really guess I would have to look at the signage, the overflow, if there was good signage, if you were, you know, I don't know how it can be said.
But there's not enough overflow, though.
But there's not enough overflow.
You just have that one little section, so we would have to build anyhow then. You're gonna have to build some overflow parking here.
It's gonna take a while, then, to put this all together.
Yeah, we hit that, we should have that engineered, and then a concept plan done, and then invite people from Button Woods to come in and say, this is the concept, we're gonna implement, so they know what's going on, you don't want these people who live there to be blindly...
Yeah, that's what I have there.
Everybody has to say.
We could do it upstairs. You could do it upstairs, right?
But I don't know if they'll come out, I'm saying have one there.
Yeah, I'm always wondering, we just go out and do it on the street?
Go in the street, tell them what we wanna do, be right there on the spot, and see what kind of feedback we get.
We dropped our own, we had our town workshop that we've done before, we've gone right out on site, meet the people out there.
We meet the people out there, tell them what time we'll be out there, and, you know, we could all share it on Facebook, or whatever, and...
Ludi, can you get us a concept of the parking, the overplays?
What, what I'm gonna do, I'll get ahold of KCI and have them draw a concept plan, because we need to have something that's detailed and scaled, and then we'll know how many spaces we can get. Well, and with, I don't know, a couple options up, two options I can look up, and then we'll bring it to the board, the board will look at it, if that's what you wanna do, then we can put the word out, and, you know, we need to put this up there.
Very good. Anyone go with that?
We'll do this next week.
So I'm gonna hold off on the word until we have the concept planned on.
Okay, very good.
Egg in there.
All right, that's the, at our last regular meeting, uh, DJ, you mentioned, uh, we wanted to talk about the economic development, unless, are you sneaking out, or can you talk about?
I got, no, I'm good. I, sorry, I had a heart attack in...
He's gotta run.
So we're, uh...
You just let him, you gotta fly.
I'm good so far, they're texting me, that's why I apologize, I keep looking at my phone, it's just serious stuff.
The, one, one of the, uh, you'd mentioned about, uh, maybe we could, uh, help people that are looking to buying their homes with some type of assistance.
Absolutely.
Yes, and, and, so we wanted to kind of bring it out on the table, and I, I think, uh, just kind of get the feel of what, what everyone's kind of thinking, I think is...
Did you, did you look at the tape?
No, I have not yet.
A couple weeks ago, a couple meetings ago, Ron had brought up a great idea of enticing the builders to build so people would move in those houses, because we have vacant lots, and then I got to thinking about it, that I didn't quite like that, because then if you build a house, um, you have the oversupply of houses, which brings down the supply, high supply, low demand, brings down everybody's property value, and it, and it only targets one kind of market, just vacant lots. Um, I was thinking, we have all kinds of vacant houses in town, that's sale by owner, or real estate company, or whatever the case may be, that we would offer whatever money he had set, was thinking in there, that you take that money, and then you divide it out and help people with closing costs, um, this way, that money is used towards closing costs, we're enticing everybody to buy anywhere in, in Elton, um, and then they would have also, hopefully, have extra money to go buy furniture, or buy, you know, how to go to Bowers, or American Home Hardware, to get, you know, whatever done there, so this way we'll stimulate some of the other businesses around here, because now you have, I mean, maybe it's a max of $5,000 or something like that, whatever it is, now, by looking at the, the code and charter, we actually can't, we have to be careful, because we can't use that money for anything but that, so we would have to, we'd have to somehow figure it out, but I just didn't like that it was just from one thing, I'd like to see us not pick winners and losers, and see if we can have all those rise at the same time, instead of just, uh, one small area.
To, to clarify, uh, what my thinking was, and maybe I didn't, uh, explain it right to everybody, the, uh, reducing or eliminating the hookup fees to entice the builders to build their projects was not money that we were gonna take out of any fund, it was money that we were not gonna collect. So it would be money that they would never pay us, so it's, I'm not taking any money from them and dispersing to anyone else, it would be money that would not be collected at all, to entice them to build that lot faster. That was, that was my thinking behind it, I wasn't gonna take any of the major facility money, or, uh, any of that money, and, and pay to them to, to, uh, reduce their, their costs, it was gonna be a cost that we weren't gonna charge them for. Uh, that was the thinking behind that, but I think in, in general, uh, I, I have to, I'll research that, I'll, I will look at the, listen, the internet's a great tool to, to try to find out what, what's available, and I can tell you, if there's, uh, uh, any way that we can help residents move into our town, and help them, and, uh, improve, and, and prove the quality of our, our community, darn right, I think everyone here would raise their hands up.
What I've, what I've been able to find is, is, uh, is pretty much what I, is some type of replacement of, of the same thing that Tom was talking about, there's another fund that you would help people move into town, that helped, uh, help with closing costs, you know, HUD has those programs also, um, and I just don't like the other side of it, uh, even though we don't collect it, and most builders that I, that, when I built my house, it's a, it's a package, this is how much it's gonna cost you, and unfortunately, they don't, they wouldn't show that hookup fees in there, but they could increase the price of the house only to decrease, and then we're out money, the end user's really not saving any money at all, because now they're paying the same thing they would've been paying for it to begin with, um, so this way, it keeps everything above board with everybody, and does, and it places a lot of people come in, or tax, I found some stuff on the internet about tax rebates. Um, I did also see something about water and sewage, uh, that was rebated monthly, uh, was credited back, but I'm not sure if we have a computer system for that, um, so, I mean, it's first year, no water, no sewage, um, so, yeah, there's a lot of things to look at, but I'm all, I'm all for whatever you're thinking, I'm just trying to think of everybody having the opportunity to utilize.
Well, that's, I think that's a fair game, you wanna make sure it's a fair game. Uh, the, uh, so let's all research that a little bit more, and, uh, I wanted to, of course, we don't have a big crowd that I can talk about my economic, yes?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you collect the water hookup fees now?
Currently, we're...
If I remember correctly, when I moved into Elton, I think it was added on to our water bill until it was completely paid off.
Like the utility permit?
Yeah, that was the liability permit, you moved in, you bought a house, it's an existing house.
We bought, uh, they were building the house.
Yeah, they would've been paid for by the builder, when you have the building permit. But at one time, I understand, there was a manual system of adding to the clearly water sewer bills, which was very difficult to come across, and I would like...
What year was it?
Seventy-five.
Yeah, it could've been.
Yeah, I think it was manual, I was told there's a manual system, actually added amount to the bill, and...
Yeah, ever since, uh, that I've known, it was always paid at the time of the, the building permit. The, uh, uh, my concept of our economic development plan for the town is, is, uh, and, and I'm, I'm here to get as much feedback as I can from everybody, but my thinking is, is, once again, to go with that team approach, to go with, uh, well, let me, let me, let me start off by saying this, here's where I see that we have challenges in our town, and I don't mean that these to be the wrong way, and I'm looking at Gene, I'm gonna be, it's not being, it's not being critical, I'm just gonna say the way that I see that it is. And some cases, when you have, and this, and listen, I wanna, this is a broad, I'm dancing here a little bit. A developer comes into the town of Elton, and the first line of vision they have is with our planner or a building inspector, and they have to follow the rules, they have the rulebook in front of them, and they can't say, they don't know what we're thinking, they don't know what Louis is thinking, they have to give the black and white answer on, uh, economic development as they see it. Uh, do you, what do you wanna do? Well, I wanna put a, a 50,000 square foot building on this lot, uh, can you tell me what the, uh, it, tell, tell me a little bit about what you can do and can't do? There's gonna be forestation issues, there's gonna be stormwater management issues, there's gonna be front foot assessment issues, there's a height requirement issue, there's a lot of things that, uh, come with that package, and everything that our planning office and our building inspector's office tell the customer is 100% correct, without question, it's 100% correct. But when you're trying to create, uh, that, uh, do anything that we can to pull them in, they do not have the ability to say, listen, uh, we can, maybe we can work on a tax abatement, maybe we can work on freezing the fees, maybe we can reduce this over X amount of, uh, period of time, they can't be creative. So, uh, where other communities have, and, and the challenge that I'm telling you about right now is no different than the challenge that the, the county, I met with Lisa Webb, uh, here at 1:00 today, uh, with the, the county economic development, uh, director, and she understands those challenges even at the county level. So my thinking is, is, uh, how can we, when we, when we have an opportunity to get this customer to come in, how can we capture them and keep them here, because I, I can tell you, our leads aren't very great in today's economy. So my thought was, well, we have to have a, a team effort, which would include our planner, our building inspector, myself is the mayor, I would love to include someone from the business community, from the Alliance office, I want to include, uh, either someone from the hospital and/or the Cecil Community College, and I'd also like to include maybe a former mayor, or a former mayor or two, uh, on this committee. And, uh, the, the thinking behind that is, is, the customer is gonna go directly to Gene or Chip like they normally do, but it's gonna allow them to understand that, listen, if you maybe need a little bit more flexibility, you should meet in front of our committee, and then if we can get to the committee, and we see the project as it's laying out, it'll give us a little bit more ability to say, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do, here's what we've done in the past, and, and I'm not saying that we're not doing that today, but I think it would give us a, a little warmer, friendlier feeling, give me the opportunity to close them, I want the responsibility to close the deal, and maybe, maybe I'm being a little selfish when I say that. And maybe, maybe I'm being a little selfish when I say that. I want to close that deal because I think I can. And so the concept behind that, that's, that's the driving force. Now, what type of swag do we need to go with this? Well, we need, we need a powerful website to be able to, when people come onto this site, they're going to, they're going to know everything there is about our town. They're going to know every vacant spot that we have available. They're going to know what infrastructure is in place. They're going to know what zoning. They're going to know even the possible tax and the water ability to those sites. They're going to know if there's natural gas to that site. They're going to know how close the school district is to these sites. I know we have a lot of this information, but I don't think we have all the information in one crystal ball per se for that customer. I'd like to see our literature. You know, the county has, this came from the tourism group and it's a, you know, it's a, it's a great pamphlet. It has a little bit about everything, but I can see this being about the whole town of Elton. So this is, this is going to be a tool that we hand to them and they're going to know everything that they ever know.
We have two different ones.
Two different ones?
Yes.
Which is great, but it's going to have a-
But we make them out of our office, so it's not professionally printed.
That's correct. And I didn't want to take that away from you. I know that we do that.
But I just wanted to say that.
We're going to, we're going to have this, we're going to have in this a 17-point Jiffy Lube checklist that's going to say, do you have, if you're coming to Elton, do you have your business license for the state of Maryland? Do you have your sales and use license? Do you sell tobacco? Do you want to sell tobacco? Do you have your tobacco license? Are you going to sell cigars? Do you have your cigar license? Do you have, and go right on down the line. And we're going to make it so easy for these folks to do business with the town of Elton, their head is going to spin. And we're going to set a standard where when you go to those national conferences again, not only are they going to talk about Elton in that way, we're going to be highlighted as one of the leading economic development drivers in the state of Maryland. And I think that we can get that way. There's, there's additional, most of the effort is going to be in putting in our infrastructure is the initial goal here. There's a, there's, it's, there's a lot of cost involved in getting these planning maps together. I know we have some of them, but we also have to get these planning maps in place to make it so easy for people. Currently, right now, you can get on the, and listen, I'll be embarrassed if you tell me we can get on our planning here. Do we have the same ability at the town website to be able to pull up the G I, or the-
We, we do that through the, Cecil County has a G I S, a very nice G I S site. It's got everyone's, and our engineers have overlapped the property data for us to use internally so we can also pull up some property data. You can do that at the county.
You go onto the county website right now and you can pull up any lot, zoom it in. It'll tell you who owns it, what's it about, the size of the parcel, all the information. We want that specifically for our town. These are things and these are, you know, I'm throwing out a lot of, lot of ideas, but I want to make it so easy for people to do business with us and, yes, Jean?
I just wanted to add another person to your team.
Yes.
Someone from State Highway.
There you go. And you know, that's probably one of the best suggestions because we have so many state highways going through here.
And they tend to slow things down a lot.
That would be a good one.
Doing their job with their, it can be a roadblock, no pun intended.
I, I just, I think we have, we have, if we can put these tools together, it's going to take a little bit of time to do it. Currently, right now, you know, I want to say we've, we've been in a positive light. As of today, we've got several more buildings just on Main, and I want to go back to the alliance. Anytime there's anything to do with Main Street or downtown, we know that you get the call. You handle the call and it moves in that way and then, which is great because we're starting to show a lot more success in our downtown. Four buildings that I know that's under contract right now, which is huge. It's huge. Four more of those buildings are going to be filled up. And today, meeting with Lisa, she gave me a couple of leads for other properties on the outside that she didn't know. And when I say she didn't, but there's, there's, there's information out there, but we got to stay in front of them. And I think if we stay in front of them as the leader, showing the best product out there, I think that you're going to see that we're going to rise to the top. The tourism meeting today, I'm glad I went to the breakfast this morning. And it was, I was pleasantly surprised that out of the six major awards for tourism, think about this, they give out six awards every year, that's, our town got three of them. Our town, listen, our town got three awards today. One award was for the first ride events that's been hosted through the town, which drives folks coming into, into the town. And when you take this, this is bringing in more people than the other towns. It's a winning program. The alliance got recognized, the economic impact, and Minnehagen's got the business of the year for the new, the investment that they put into a town and drove forward. And the town of Elton also got recognized because we're going to host the Bassmasters Elite Tournament Dinner here in Elton on that Tuesday night, I think it's going to be in August. I'm not really sure we're going to host it at, at this point.
I think they had asked for Minnehagen because they wanted it downtown, get people away from water.
Yeah.
Well, they, they, that's what's personal.
So it's going to be, it's going to be kind of unique. So I know I'm bouncing around, but I'm here today is, I want to ask what you guys want to see? Am I, am I going the wrong way, right way? What do you think? What do we need to do? Earl?
I can say in the last couple of years, I thought we looked towards waiving the fees just to bring more businesses downtown. For two years, I think, remember Louis, we brought this up, about waiving the fees, maybe do like a two-year program, make, pay it back, not go away, but pay it back within two years after they establish their business. That was one of the things I know, I thought we talked about it. I'm not sure whether, what we did with it.
Well, never happened.
Yeah, because we looked at the way Middletown was bringing businesses in. I don't think they even charged a couple of fees. They just bring them in and many people were flooding the Delaware area. We're saying, why can't we do this? And we talked to the mayor over in Middletown. And that was one of their biggest things was people didn't want to pay them a couple of fees. But yet, we don't have to throw them completely out, but put them on the back burner. Let them, let them take two years to get to something established first and then pay it back, but it'd be on books. You understand what I'm saying? So, and you talked about your list of items and I think we mentioned this to Jeanie, when a person comes in to apply for a permit, here's, here's step one to five. Make sure this is complete before you move on to the next. You'll know exactly what you have. Then from five to eight, comply with this. And then by nine to 10, you have all your steps out. We shouldn't have to worry about anybody going to the, to the, what is it, the five feet board, no, no, the planning board. Because their steps have been met, then we should be able to get them in. And I've been running about a whole bunch of, coming back three months, coming back another month.
You can't do that. You cannot.
Well, I think, I know, I don't think he meant avoid the, I think he meant that checklist.
I think they avoided the group. A checklist to follow so that when I come in, I know exactly what I have to do within the first three to six months.
Right. And they do, they do have a checklist. They do tend to want to rush to get approval. So they'll say, well, can you prove a contingent upon me doing this? The next time I come in for concept preliminary, final, we always work with them because we know that a lot of times, times of the essence. And even one of the most recent businesses that received final approval wasn't, didn't quite have all their T's crossed and I's dotted, but we worked with them and said they can get going because they wanted to start breaking ground with us.
And I was saying, not in a negative way, it's just that I want to make it easier for businesses to come in and comply with what they need to. Instead of hearing this negative atmosphere of, oh, you guys are hard to deal with. And I know that's not the case.
A lot of times, their only, their plans are only as good as their engineer. And if their engineer doesn't read the zoning ordinance and doesn't put what was supposed to on the plans, it puts us in a position where we're chasing them for information. But we're still trying to get them through the approval process also.
And that was one of the other things, one of the towns when I was away did, they offered engineering help to people downtown that can't, you know, taking a risk on a whole building.
And I think that's important.
Yeah, it is.
Listen, we've got an engineer sitting right there. We've got Dan Hanley.
Oh.
Oh, geez.
So, so, that was never next, that was, you hear when you, when you go to a lot, something, even though I hear it, I know you're doing everything you can to bring this in, but you just ask, what would you like to see? I would like to see a lot.
You'd like to see some type of engineering help.
Yeah.
I like it.
And I understand what you're saying. It's more like customer service and being welcoming, welcoming, opening up your arms to these people, saying, we want you. We, what do we have to do to get you here? And, you know, we, we've all wanted that, so it's-
We want your business. Steve?
These are everything that I've said for, I don't know how long now. I'd like to take it one step further. The internet, the plans, professional courtesy, the other things, what we're talking about. We've talked about the infrastructure and everything. You know, we're supposed to have a list of one to 10, what's worse, to, to what's okay. I haven't seen anything there. I mean, we have to have that in place. You know, it's, the capital improvements.
And that's all part of this. It's part of the-
I know that you're going to be rolling out your EDC, EDC, whatever you want to call it, but that's, that's definitely part of mine is the blown up version, which I've talked about many, 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 many times. Yeah. But I don't think that it's, it's something that should be rushed into that we should actually budget for, for the majority of this coming budget. I think it's something that we have to sit down and start to say, this is next, this is next, this is next. And even if we add to the budget coming into FY16, we have to add more because now we're rolling out the next phase of it. Maybe have three phases. But at least have a really good game plan of your RLI of three years. This is where we want to be and roll out the phase, phase, phase. It's going to mess with the budget a little bit, but at least the taxpayers will be able to see, this is your return on investment. Once we're done, boom, here we go. I, I have a sense.
Charlie, any comment?
I think everything that's been said, I agree with Earl in the sense that, and then I agree with your comments, when someone wants to build or come here, there's going to be arbitrary laws set. You know, they have to see Gene, they have to see, you know, the planning and building. But I still think there ought to be some type of initiative, as you mentioned, or some incentive to want someone to come here. And certainly if you're going to give me a discount, you're going to give me this, I'm going to consider the fact that you want me to come here. Plus, Elton's a great place to be, as we all know. And, you know, going back again, builders, for Elton at one time, I don't know whether it was true or not, we were always told that it was difficult to deal with Gene and them, but they did a great job. And I never heard the negativity, even though I sat on the board, so I don't know who that came from. But certainly we talked about having a chestlet, a checklist. You know, if the bill is going to come in, they take care of this, 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 that, the other. And then when they want to finish it up, they know they have to do this, this, this and the other. And certainly she had talked about it and we've done that. And, you know, I agree with you. There needs to be something done at all during the year.
I think it, I think it makes our job a little bit different because we'll hear, we'll hear the comments, town of Elton's tough to deal with. And then we could say, well, did you follow the checklist? And, well, you know, I went from seven to 11. Well, listen, you can't go from seven to 11. You got to have, do an eight, nine and 10 before you get there, right? And I think it'd help us too, to understand that a little bit.
And the checklist has always been in the ordinance. It was considered appendix A, I think it is. It had a checklist for each stage of development and what you had to do.
That'd be good.
It's been in there for, you know-
The client gets that, do the developers get that or at least?
It's online, yeah.
We're going to make it easy for them.
And we did develop a separate checklist mechanism if they came in, so.
One thing I'd like to add to the, as far as rebating money, whether it be closing costs or waiving fees, you know, I'm actually not, I'm not for that because I truly think that it's a quick fix.
For which one?
For any of it.
Wait, for what?
To entice, to entice, I don't actually, I don't agree with rebates. I hate rebates.
For the water?
Yeah, for any of it. I'm in the car business and I hate rebates. It's an, I do. It's an, it's an enticement. And the thing is, is as rebates get higher, it's because you have, that particular thing is to stretch merchandise. So you're enticing somebody more because of that. But when you have new products come out and everybody, the demand is there, there are no rebates. We have a lot of bank cards that have no rebates on them. And that's where I'd really like to see Elton go. Instead of enticing somebody to build, just, you know, hopefully somebody moves in here and stuff, I would want to see this robust, huge Elton that people want to come here, that you don't have to entice somebody to come here. And I think the proper plan, when we put in different phases and you have this huge, you have business that wants to come here and jobs. And now, 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 and that's something that will last a very long time. Because if, in my opinion, if you're rebating immediately, it's a very short fix. It doesn't, it doesn't fix a long time.
I understand the rebate too, but I also think if you're selling your town, there's got to be something I do that you got to sell to the people that make them want to come here. There's got to be something to say, come live in Elton, come here. We, not necessarily giving you whatever, whatever, but there's got to be something to make you want to come here.
As long as there's a plan to wean off of that, you know, because I, I, I like self-supporting. As long as we can wean off of that.
If we could create jobs, then everyone would want to come here.
Exactly. And that's exactly what Middletown did.
We got to create jobs.
They created the jobs and now the housing market went crazy, but they gave incentives. They waived fees, they waived taxes.
For businesses.
For, and that's how they got two of the Amazon, you know?
And this, and this is what Tom was saying, that a lot of businesses also brought jobs when they were lending money out.
Exactly.
Then you need a hatch.
And everybody's hanging now because-
Then you don't have to give them the 15, that's, that's my point. Yes.
That's, that's my point exactly, is entice the businesses, not necessarily somebody just to fill a vacant house, but get businesses in here and with economic plan and everything we're talking about.
That's the number one goal was to get business.
That's right.
We've got to create jobs, great jobs.
Yeah. This is sort of a random same subject. It upset me. I was in an establishment where I was buying something one day this past week. And clerk asked me, would you like a bag? And I was like, yeah. I said, I got some other stops to make, so I'll just put it in a bag, you know? And she said, yeah, you need to keep stuff in a bag in this area. And I just looked at her and I said, no worse than anyplace else. You know, and that, but I mean, yeah. It just, the bad reputation that Elton got, whether deserved or not, is still out there. And I don't know.
It didn't happen, it didn't happen every-
It didn't happen every night, absolutely.
And it's everywhere. Unfortunately, with the drug problem, it is everywhere. And the only way out of it is we have enough people that actually can be proactive, not reactive. And then you hear those remarks and you hear a remark and you say, I feel safe here. I shop here all the time. And, you know, that's the way-
I'll be honest, there's a couple of places I won't shop at night, not by myself.
Oh, well, I, I understand.
Of course, I don't shop at night by myself anyway. I can't run as fast as I used to, so.
And now, I will tell you that the, just a quick comment would be, we had some challenges at the Big Elton Mall there for a while. And I can tell you, they lit it up. If you haven't been there in the evening, I can tell you, it is lit up now at the Big Elton Mall. They did a great job of lighting it up. They take in, I, I feel very comfortable in the, in the mall today. You know, I've had discussions about on Main Street over the years and, and, you know, the goal is if you can continue to, we're going to have areas that you just have to bring the light to it, you know? Only thing, bad can only happen in the dark spots. And if you can, if you can lighten them up and, and, you know, good will conquer evil, you know, I guess. And we just have to keep pushing, you know, keep pushing to make it right. Anyone have any questions on the economic development side? Mr. Lemon?
I have a question. I think you're, something really good here. An example is Toyota last year moved its corporate headquarters from California to Texas. 3,000 people, they got asked why. Now, 3,000 people, and they got asked why. That's what you're talking about.
Yep.
Economic incentives and less regulation.
And water.
And, um.
You're right.
What did you just say?
Texas has water. That's probably good, you'd like to have water.
He's a Texas head.
Yeah.
Well, water is, um, but, and you have a, um, but you're talking about wowing them when they get here, which is important. But the other part is figuring out how to get them here. I think you gotta sell this whole area.
Yes.
It's just not Elton, but it's, uh, Chesapeake City and whatever, Philadelphia, the whole area, you gotta sell. And, uh, the other thing, you have a governor that's very interested in economic development, so you might wanna contact his office and see what he can do to help you. I think that, I don't know, I, I just think that that's his mission.
Yes, it is. And actually, I have to give, I have to give him a lot of credit, 'cause he's standing up right now, and he said he'll extend the time in Annapolis till they accept, uh, accept that budget, so I'm giving him some credit right now.
Well, and you know, you might, you know, you talk about Middletown, I would certainly go over there and talk to them and ask them how they did it.
Again, actually, I had a, uh, about an hour meeting with, uh, the mayor of, uh, Middletown, and, uh, I've got some, uh, Gene actually created the notes, and, uh, there's a lot of things they did, but, uh, one unique thing is, is that Middletown doesn't fall under county rule. You don't have to pay county taxes when you live in Middletown. You're only paying Middletown taxes.
That's interesting.
So, yes, they're not governed by the county. So here in Cecil County, not only when you're in Elton, you have to pay county taxes, but Elton taxes. In Middletown, it's all Middletown taxes, no Newcastle County taxes.
But the Elton tax you pay is, Dr. Thomas.
It is the, that's correct. And, and, uh, what they also have, uh, is they have a power plant that they, uh, which they have an electric fund which helps fund.
Real estate transfer tax.
So, it's, it's unique, but what they did, the unique thing that Middletown did, is he told me, uh, about 16 years ago, they took a huge bond for, uh, tens of millions of dollars, and they built that, they did a, a, a massive annexation. They looked at that map, and they said, this is where we wanna annex. Now, of course, it was only like three farms that they did. And, and they took those three farms, and they annexed them in, and, uh, they put the infrastructure. They borrowed $20 million in the bond, they put the infrastructure, so all the infrastructure they have is in place, but for 12 years, there was no one in these spots. And he, and he was telling me, you know, this is starting to sweat some bullets here, but their electric fund helped carry that debt. And, uh, but now they're really reaping the benefits. You gotta trust your town, you gotta trust yourselves, and, and sometimes you take some risks, uh, but I'm sure everyone's gonna make sure we don't take too many crazy risks on this, as a team. Can you look at me? That's messed up. One more thing.
I got.
Yes, sir.
Tom often impressed me with a couple things he said that I hadn't really thought about. He talked about the Small Business Development Center. I would certainly push that. I know somebody who started a business in a Rising Sun, and I guess that's where they went. They went somewhere here in the county, and they came in and helped them develop the whole business plan and budget and everything.
Yes.
And this person told me it was really, really helpful to them.
It's free.
It's free. It didn't cost any money. And, uh, so I would think that would be something I would promote. Stuff like that, that you're talking about, this is what we do.
Yes.
And we're also fortunate to have, in our library here in Elton, a Small Business Center. They do the exact same thing as the Small Business Development Center, because they're not here in Cecil County anymore.
I never knew it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you gotta tell somebody.
We're gonna put it on our swag.
Well, we have a brochure that has.
You're gonna have to have a 10-page brochure.
Yeah, it's gonna be a book.
But they're excellent. They'll do the business plan, they'll do everything for you. Actually, Vicky Crewe went through them, um, when she did the dance station. Um, but it's, it's an excellent resource there. The Small Business Development Center is Cecil, Hartford County. They used to be right here at Elton Station and Cecil College, but now they are at Hartford College. So, um, we do direct people to the Small Business Center in the library. I should say, I do, when I'm asked.
Another thing Tom was.
And it's great, it is great.
Another thing Tom was talking about that I know a lot of you keyed into, uh, was is self-funding. And my understanding, view is that, uh, you can't, you have to, the state requires you to put all your money in the, in the, a bank like PNC. You can't put it in other funds and stuff like that. So, I think it's interesting to find out how that would work. To, to take town money, and, and that's the way I would go, because he said there was less compliance issues, whatever that means. But, uh, uh, if he, he has $600,000 out, and, uh, we could come up with $600,000 or $1 million or whatever, and, uh, I would think that 5% is a decent rate to charge, because there's costs to run the program.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that probably might cover the cost to run the program. So, I think, I think that's a good thing to look into, as, as you said, maybe we don't know the answer, but I, I thought, I was impressed with that.
Yeah.
I mean, the deal is, that's not the city's money.
Currently, it's.
It is not there now, currently, right. But other tiny town is doing their own.
He said that that money was.
It was not, it was not the city of Haverdy Grace's money, that was state money.
Tony.
That's what they're working on.
T-A-N.
T-A-N.
Tony Town.
T-A-W.
Elton money, would it be possible to take Elton money and fund something like that?
Darn right, it's gonna be possible. Darn right, it's gonna be.
Don't be so sure. You're the mayor, you gotta use the government.
I, I will tell you, I have researched it, and I have that answer, that I present to everybody. I do have those, I do have that answer. Uh, well, listen, uh, yes.
We were talking about the shopping malls, and this was the last thing.
Yep.
Right before, when you said light up the town.
Yes.
I have two items there that I'd like to find out, like lighting Delaware Avenue. I came through Sunday, it was dark as heck, going even up the hill, I'm not sure whether the lights were off.
It's always dark.
But I'm, I'm questioning this, because there's a lot of people walking now, and I'm not sure what we can do, whatever, but I think up at the top of the hill, it used to be some lights, right at where the, uh, the housing stuff, uh, started. But, um, I'm just questioning this, and then Locust Lane coming off of, uh, High Street that area for that first two or three, or the first stop sign, I noticed the lights have been off there, and I'm not sure whether it's the bowl, but I noticed that Sunday's open. Those are two items I had.
Very good, Lou's gone down.
No, no. Delaware was, what'd you say, Delaware Avenue is one.
Locust Lane right from High Street.
Also where the drug deals have been.
Delaware Avenue's always dark.
Drug deals and tech places.
Because people stand right there in the dark. I don't know whether this is cold.
Lou, I brought up about, uh, I brought up about the basketball poles at the last meeting, and I, I went through, uh, Buckville Farms, and I saw one on Tarken Drive, right there. So, yeah, Tarken Drive, around the 100 block of Tarken Drive, maybe we can get a place off, tag it, not remove it. Public Works, tag it. It's in the street. They don't need to pick it up, just tag it, it's over there.
We don't, we don't. That's why.
It's okay.
We know the ones that wouldn't go.
Okay.
We don't.
Responsible for Meadow Park, basketball hoops. Is that Mary?
Yeah.
I, I've been taking the dogs through there, taking Big Lou. The dog park, by the way, is, is, uh, it's a need, and it's just.
That's right.
And Meadow Park itself is, is a dire need, there's some heavy TLC. Um, it's just, there's ruts, cars have been driving off of the paved road, and there's ruts along the side.
Who did that?
There, there's one basketball pole with no backboard, of course, no hoop with a backboard, and then the other one is, is just, it's atrocious. Um, so it's, it's, it's Mary.
Yeah, I actually, yeah, I actually spoke to Mary, uh, a little while ago, and, and they were gonna get on it. She, we were talking about the basketball net, she said that every time they put basketball nets up, they get taken down, uh, immediately, but, uh, the Gold Coast, everything just needs a fresh, it's, it's needs to be painted. And, and then I guess to add to that, uh, at some point, Dan, we need to start cleaning up those logs that's in Meadow Park, along Delaware Avenue's side. And, uh, just another comment, uh, I think that anywhere that we, anytime that any of our company trucks are driving around town, and they see, uh, uh, debris, or logs, or trash in the street, we should just pull over, take two seconds, and take it, throw it in the back of the truck.
But I thought, I thought you told them to do that.
Well, I thought we were doing it.
'Cause I told people, Dan and I were someplace yesterday looking at some asphalt, and I told them that our town people supposed to be doing that.
I, I, I think anywhere that, that we are driving that town vehicle, and you see debris, we need to make that effort to pop it in there. Makes sense? Lou, you heard it. I just think it has to happen. It's, uh, we drive by these things every day, and, and I'll even take a step further. I guess I'll start pulling over and pulling it, uh, throwing it in there. All right. No, I, I know, I got Pat and, and.
Are you talking about like, I don't wanna say the grass clippings, yardage?
Don't bring that up.
There's, it's not when they go, like, say, I trim my tree.
Thank you for bringing that up. Can I say something? No, no, I know exactly where you're getting at. On, on our streets today, after this nice weekend, I see people rake up leaves and put a lot of debris into the street. My question is, is help, someone needs to help educate me, is this, is this something we should do, not do? Should I tell the residents, this isn't the right time of the year to do this, or?
We had that crew out picking it up.
Yeah, April, right, on the ground. Was on the website.
Do you want me to start, do you want me to start some of it over April, but it's out now, I'm just trying to get ahead, but.
I, I know, we need, we need to do a better job of, of putting some information together and, and showing it to our residents, that these are the dates that you have to do it. And, and we gotta stand by, 'cause it's creating.
They already started. It's started.
Creates 10 times more work.
And if they bag it, it's cleaner, but that's what they'll put out in the thing, so we just, you know, basically, you've taken a four-person operation now, it's six or seven, so based on that, then, you know.